Good evening, I'd like to call order the workshop of January 6, 2020. First on the agenda, Strategic Plan with Peter Grayton and Phil Crowell presenting. And councilors as they make their way up to the presentation table, this is a review of the strategic plan that was accepted, not approved, but accepted by the last council and was a culmination of around a year's worth of work by staff and volunteer citizen groups. So, this is just to get you up to date on everything that's been discussed. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, good evening. It's good to have the first meeting of the year on such an important topic that many people worked on. I'd like to recognize the mayor and previous council. Some of you were involved in the development of Strategic Plan. It's a very important document, I think, for the city. I also want to recognize Cliff Grime, who was the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee and did an excellent job. Subcommittee Chairs as well, the citizens who were involved and the staff. It was a team effort, there were over 100 people from the community involved. And the gentleman to my left, Phil Crowell, the Assistant City Manager, who quarterbacked this process and did a terrific job doing that. It really was, I think, a great process. And I've gone through strategic planning processes three times in my career that were as extensive as this one, so, great job by everybody involved. So tonight, we're going to review the strategic plan and we'd like to receive direction from the council. We're not asking for decisions tonight. We will have a meeting again next Monday. We're doing it, a tour of Public Works Department and also an orientation at Public Works and there will be time to continue the discussion on the strategic plan at that time. And then, of course, at the retreat, which we'll be doing on Saturday, January 25th at Central Main Community College. The plan is something that we'd like to see take Auburn into the next, it says 150 years, I'm gonna say five years, because I think for the city to continue to move forward in a positive direction, this is a document that you'll have to review again. We know there's going to be an update of the comprehensive plan, we'll be talking about that at a certain point, not too far from now, we'll have a discussion on not just the comprehensive plan update that needs to take place, but also the charter. Auburn is committed to the importance of a dynamic downtown and strong neighborhoods that together with a well-protected environment offer healthy and sustainable living and make ours a welcoming, inclusive community. Leve Auburn is most successful when people feel engaged, connected, empowered here and when they see themselves in this community as economically resilient. This was the mission statement of the Auburn Strategic Planning Committee and I think it really highlights the areas that we need to be focusing on as a community. I'd like to have Phil speak on the process. Phil is going to have to leave in about a half an hour to go to the inauguration in Lewiston, representing the City of Auburn, so I'm gonna yield some time here to Phil to talk about the process and then I'll speak again on the recommendations.
Thank you, Peter. Mayor, council, I think that for many of you, you were involved in the process. Some of you served as council reps, some of you also served as committee representatives for the three different committees that we had for the process. It's important to know that the process actually started here in the council chambers and the council created a resolve which implemented the Strategic Planning Committee. And that was done September of 2018. Several meetings with the subcommittees took place throughout the months of December through April. We also had a Strategic Planning Committee, much like a steering committee, that group met and really formed the final 11 recommendations that are in your booklet that. Peter's gonna spend a little bit of time in, in a few minutes as we walk through that. The entire plan was then brought back to the council and it was adopted by the council in September of 2019. And then we had, yeah, accepted by the council. Then we had, we had another community outreach. So we launched with a community outreach and then we landed the plan with a community outreach. Both of those opportunities provided, throughout this process, over 100 individuals that participated. And so, the document that you have has a great deal of community involvement, great deal of community thoughts, ideas, hopes that they see for their neighborhoods. When you read through the booklet, and I really encourage you to look at the appendixes that are in this document, and you start reading through that, that's when you're gonna really see the work that took place in a very small group. That small group, they came together, they brainstormed, and the groups tried to capture as much of that as possible. When we did the plan, we really tried to keep it with everyone's thoughts and comments as they wrote them down. So that's, when you see that, that's coming directly from that group, not washed at all from us, we didn't, we didn't clean it up, we didn't do anything, we just really wanted to make sure we captured that. That'll be important as you move through and as you take a look at this and as we start looking at prioritization. So the implementation of the plan now starts. We have been through, a lesser degree, working towards some of these initiatives already. The ones that we could begin having conversation at a department level, those have been happening. As we start looking at, how can we start looking into the future, we've really encouraged the leadership team to start taking a look at this strategic plan as they start developing their budgets. And so the implementation has started, but it's really gonna come to you as a council when you start adopting your priorities. And you'll do that through a discussion like Peter mentioned at the, at the session that we're gonna have at Central Main Community College, but then you'll also be doing it as you approve the budget as you move forward. So I mentioned that it was 100 residents, business leaders, community partners, all participating in the subcommittee, thousands of hours over a six-month period. We really started with these three focus areas and that was quality growth investment. The council actually appointed members to serve on those three specific committees. And their work, the quality and growth, for those that were part of those groups, you know that, they were meeting at the same time, working and going through, developing goal statements. When you look at the goal statements within your document, the reason why it's nine, it started off as 10 and then we blended the two for education. And so, when you read through those goal statements, they really took a lot of time wordsmithing those statements. And I think that those statements alone really say what the focus and what they feel that we should be working towards as a community. And then they began forming solutions, action steps. Where, it gets a little challenging is that each group was unique. So each group, as much as we try to keep it to a certain format, each group through their process kinda came up with their own strategies that, so it's not necessarily, you're not gonna look at the document for one group and it's not gonna be the same as another. There are gonna be some differences in it. But that was okay, it was important to just let that group come up with their own solutions, strategies and craft it the way that they felt they should. And so, so you're not gonna see any consistency when you look at that. However, those strategies are consistent with that goal statement that they were working towards. And then we did leave, we did land on 24 strategies. Those 24 strategies were then brought to the Investment Committee. That was a lot for the Investment Committee. That was a big challenge for them. The Investment Committee, we, one thing that we were able to do throughout this entire process was kind of evolve as we went through. As things were changing, we were working on, based on information that we're getting back from one committee meeting, changing it and trying to meet the need that the committees were looking for. Investment Committee was one where we ended up having to redirect what we had originally hoped for an outcome, just because that workload was too great. There was no way they were gonna be able to go through all 24 strategies and really develop a full A to Z plan on how to implement that strategies, do a cost comparison, budget for each one, that just was not gonna be able to happen. So, so we worked on the Investment Committee almost as another process of taking a look at the strategies that were done by the quality and the growth committees and they started working through their own action steps with the lens of, if we needed to invest this, what would this look like? As a, as a, as a community, how, what are our priorities as far as funding these initiatives? So that's the lens that the Investment Committee took and when they did their, their report. And then really it came down to these 11 recommendations that came from the, from the steering, steering group. And that Strategic Planning Committee really wrestled with, with this, some of you were on that committee. One thing that was interesting is that the recommendations aren't just the nine goal statements, the recommendations aren't just the 24 strategies, they really took at the work that was done and they pulled the recommendations from the work. And so when you look through the recommendations, you might look at one of them and say, I don't see that listed as a goal. It may be coming in under one of those goals, but it's not exactly the goal. Or you might look at it and say, this isn't listed as that strategy, because the committee really felt that, as this evolved and as we went through this process, identifying these recommendations were what they wanted to come forward with as where they felt the priorities were based on the full report. So that was our process and I think that we're really fortunate to have community members that came together and spent time and, and worked on this. Our goal now would be to do some follow-up with those groups and Peter will talk a little bit about that as we move forward.
So in terms of the recommendations, thank you, Phil. There are, as Phil said, 11 recommendations and it was challenging to, to get to this point in time, those of you who were involved, you remember that. That's the beauty of this process though. People had discussions and they debated and they came up with these recommendations as a result. I'm going to go through them for the public in particular who are watching. The 11 recommendations in no particular order are, work to protect and fully enjoy Auburn's natural resources. Makes a lot of sense when you think about Auburn and, and the assets that we have as a community with natural resources that exist. Protect Lake Auburn and all other bodies of water was another recommendation. Develop a downtown management district focusing on Great Falls Plaza, downtown and the Andes Gogon River. Define and promote industry clusters. Address identified public service and infrastructure needs. Define neighborhoods, support rehabilitation and beautification. Prioritize transportation by using transit to connect people with communities, employment and services. Improve image of schools and increase commitment to and value of education. That's certainly an important goal for all of us as a community with the new high school being built, it's a great opportunity for us. Study and plan to increase pedestrian environment to include connectivity. Establish a citywide communications plan and then invest in arts, history, culture, recreation and entertainment. To give you an idea of some of the strategies that came under each of these recommendations, and I believe you have this sheet in front of you.
You don't have that one.
Work to protect and enjoy, fully enjoy Auburn's natural resources. One of the strategies or a couple of them was compile an inventory list and breakdown of uses for all recreational properties, city and non-city owned. Another is explore grant opportunities with local partners for new trails and parks. And then you have protect Lake Auburn and all other bodies of water, create lists of all bodies of water and access points. Consider swimability assessment in addition to create swimming locations and safe standards. Then under develop a downtown management district focusing on Great Falls Plaza, downtown and the Andes Gogon River. Redevelop the Great Falls area for multiple destination, mixed-use activities. There are already discussions taking place with Tom Platts, who's a developer, who is a really key partner for us in terms of what we wanna do with Great Falls area. He's met with me and met with myself and our economic development team and I know Michael Chammings met the other day with him again. Another strategy is promote and create an identity for downtown in New Auburn as the focal point for arts and entertainment. With the anniversary park, there's an opportunity there, which we've talked about with LA Arts and what they wanna do. Define and promote industry clusters. Promote our large industrial areas as the space for creating large-scale, sustainable industry clusters. Promote agriculture processing and distribution opportunities of Auburn's large ag and industrial land areas. Then under address identified public service and infrastructure needs, it has long been noted that it would be important for the community to add a public safety bill. There's been a lot of discussion about that over the years and some research has been done on that. Another strategy is define the desired look, feel and function of corridors and gateways as you come into the community. We're all familiar with those issues. How do we best address them is, is a challenge. Define neighborhoods, support rehabilitation, beautification. The strategy is identify and define the neighborhoods. We're doing a good job in many cases, we need to do a better job in that, that area of strategic planning. Identify public spaces within each neighborhood and map the gathering places or spaces. Prioritize transportation by using transit to connect people with communities, employment and services. Strategies evaluate ridership information to create an efficient transit system that meets greatest public needs. It's very interesting that this is a strategy because the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee, with the support of the Andes Gogon Transit Resource Committee, is undergoing a study, as I think many of you know, if not all of you know. This will be a study that will look at what the bus system would be for Auburn if we did not have one, taking into consideration that we have already a transportation center. Look at what we could do if we didn't have a bus system today, how would we design it? How would we try to meet the needs of the community and the citizens that we serve? Another strategy is continue to support development of market value housing by a secondary turnpike exit in Auburn. Then under improve image of schools and increase commitment to and value of education. Strategies increase learning opportunities for all students. Also, invest in promotion, PR, marketing materials for the purpose of promoting city and school events. This is something that can be addressed under the communications plan, which is another recommendation, as you know. Then another recommendation is study and plan to increase pedestrian environment to include connectivity. Prioritize transportation as community connector that can also enhance employment opportunities, expand sidewalk and crosswalk widths and visibility. Then establish a citywide communications plan. We have had a wonderful year this past year with 150th anniversary, sesquicentennial, which the mayor likes to speak about and did a great job promoting with Sabrina Best from staff and all the people that were involved from the community and staff members. We made that a wonderful year with the 150th anniversary. I think that the community did a great job. It's trying to take that to the next level. Liz Allen has played a marvelous role in the city manager's office. You'll hear me talk more about this, as well as Phil, in terms of what we're trying to do to enhance our communications as a community and engage people from the community. We have the opportunity to really build the image and the identity of Auburn, build a sense of community, attract visitors, new residents, I think some of that's happening now. Integrate what we're doing in terms of our website, our signage, our social media, event promotion, internal, external communications. It is very exciting to see it happening. There are not a lot of municipalities or cities in Maine that are doing that, but what I am seeing is more are starting to understand the importance of it. Just across the river, the City of Lewiston has hired a consultant to help them with the marketing effort. The City of Saco has a person who's doing the type of work that Liz is doing for us. Liz is exceptional, I don't think there's another Liz Allen around.
Thank God. Sorry to say that aloud.
Another recommendation is invest in arts, history, culture, recreation, entertainment. Support existing and new entertainment, culture and historic preservation as funding priorities. Enhance activities and events to make Auburn a destination and develop a marketing plan to attract tourism. Tonight on the agenda for the council meeting, you're gonna hear from Mark Goslin, who is the Executive Director for Municipal Partnerships and Sports Tourism for the city. He is responsible for overseeing the Norway Savings Bank Arena Recreation and the Ingrisol Turf Facility and has a great team that he's working with. I'm looking forward to hearing what Mark has to say later. And Phil is very involved in what they're doing, overseeing that work and I think it's very exciting and I look forward to hearing what Mark has to say. So, there is a lot here, there's a lot in the report, as Phil said. In terms of the next steps, this is kind of where we're at on prioritization implementation for almost as long as I can remember, since I've been here with the city. A standing agenda item for our city leadership team meetings is strategic planning. We've been talking about that prior to launching the strategic plan well over a year ago and it's on every agenda of our leadership team meetings. We have input from the leadership team that we wanna share with you tonight on what some of their thoughts are regarding what the priority should be. We cannot do everything and expect to do it well. You all know that. I know each of you, some of you better than others, but I know you understand, we can't do everything and do it well. We have to prioritize where our resources are going as a city, both in terms of personnel and fiscal resources and time involved. So it's really important that we get this direction from you on what those should be. We'll start that conversation tonight and we'll continue it next Monday and then we'll continue it when we do our retreat. We're looking at doing a City of Auburn Partnership Summit, which will be six months from now to evaluate the progress to date. That's a commitment that I feel we made to everybody who was involved in that process. We'll bring them together, talk about where we are and kind of do a progress update in terms of the strategic plan. And in the council initiatives report, which I hope you all received, did everyone receive that, I thought this last report we did was the best report we've done since, since I've been here. We started that report after I came with the support of Jody Durisco and now Kelsey Earl is helping to work with the departments and pull that information together. And if you haven't had a chance to look at that report, take a look at it. It really is very informative in terms of council initiatives and work that's going on by the city. We're going to include strategic plan updates as another aspect to that, to that report. Staff input, so, we had our own discussion and exercise that we did. We have a, we have a really great team. We're not perfect, but we've got a great group of people that are working for the city at every level throughout the organization and the leadership team had a very engaging discussion about what should be the top five priorities. Communications plan. Communications plan, certainly we feel should be part of that based on what I've said previously and what you all know. Communications is really essential and there never seems to be enough of it. Great Falls Development in the downtown area, we felt should be a high priority as well or top-five priority. A walkable downtown. As you know, there's a study going on regarding Court Street. Some of you may be more aware of that than others. Some of you were involved in that. That is going to be very interesting. We have a situation where, you know, we have this study and if we can find ways to make the downtown more walkable, I think we should try to do that. Public safety building, something that people felt should be one of the top-five priorities. When we do the tours of the different departments, we're going to do a tour of City Hall as well. You'll see that on the calendar. I think you all have the meeting schedule. I'll be talking about that later in the meeting. But that schedule includes tours of the various departments. We're going to do that here at City Hall as well. That'll give you a better understanding of some of the space constraints and space needs that we have as a city and what we're trying to do. And then another priority that the leadership team felt was important is arts, culture, history, and recreation. The next page. This is really for you and this is for you to prioritize, one through 11. Not tonight necessarily, but for the meeting that we have next month, we'd like you to come and have this list prioritized. And tonight, we've got time to be able to have a conversation, discussion, if you'd like to do that, to help inform all of you as to what everybody's thinking. But if you would take this sheet after the meeting tonight and come prepared next Monday with your list of priorities, one through 11, we will continue the discussion on what the priority should be. And that's it for the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager and Mr. Assistant City Manager. Just a little instruction to the council. This is a workshop, so it's open dialogue. We do have some time constraints tonight, but we do have some time. I'm going to open this up for comments. We're really not in the position, I think, to debate any of the priorities. That will happen later during our subsequent meetings. But are there any questions related to the strategic plan right now?
Start on this side. Ms. Boss?
Thanks for the presentation. I'm really excited to see the strategic plan coming to the implementation phase. It was really thrilling to be a part of the process thus far. So, my quick question is, the strategic plan was accepted but not adopted by the previous city council. Can you just provide some context for what that means functionally?
Yes. It was accepted as a report, but the reason it was not, we did not ask it to be adopted because there are a lot of strategies included within this report, as the Assistant City Manager spoke about. And we recognize that there might be certain strategies or goals that maybe some individual councillors didn't support or didn't feel that they wanted to approve. So, we have asked the council, the previous council, to accept it and the council did. That's the same approach that I, for what it's worth, that I used in Cumberland County when I was there as county manager. We did two five-year plans and it gave the, it gives you the latitude and the opportunity to be able to decide what direction you want to take and what you think should be the priorities going forward. And again, my suggestion or recommendation would be pick fewer priorities. The leadership team, I asked them to pick five. As Phil said, some things are going to go on anyway. We're going to work on them. We are now, but it's very important that we understand what your highest priorities are as a council.
Any other questions, Councilor Lasagna?
Thank you very much. I echo what Counselor Boss said about finally seeing this in print and seeing it move forward and what a great job you both did and the team did. When the leadership team chose its priorities, did they consider, one, budgetary concerns and/or concerns about sort of their own timeframe and work plans?
No, I didn't ask them to. Maybe in their individual minds they did. I didn't ask them. I didn't make that part of the criteria. I really wanted to know what they thought were the top-five priorities.
One other question. So, we'll continue this discussion and when we start budgetary discussions, this will be sort of a template that we'll keep referring to, correct?
Yes, it is. You're going to hear a strategic plan a lot over the next several months and beyond that. And as Phil said earlier, we've asked the department directors to include the strategic plan in their budgeting process, which they are doing.
Thank you.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of the reason I did not want to support this as a blueprint, as a, you know, hard and fast plan is this is a fluid document. If we said it was the planned template, the blueprint, then we'd be forced to implement it the way it is. This way, since it's a fluid document, we as councillors can choose our priorities and implement it, each part that we want to, in a way that makes sense for us and whatever financial possibilities we have. And that is why I was supporting it not to be a hard and fast document.
Any other questions related to the strategic plan? We got a lot of data and information. This is going to be the focal point of our, the second part of our workshop next Monday. Okay, so after our tour of public works. Very good.
Just a sort of a logistic question. When we fill out our top priorities, do we send them to anybody or we just bring them?
Yeah, if you could, if you could send them, that would be great. I can send them to Kelsey Earl in the city manager's office.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. We're going to move on now. Next we have, on the topic is agricultural building fees with staff from Economic Community Development presenting, I believe, Mr. Cousins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Yes, please.
Senator. That's right, Counselor Lasagna. I think you're responding to a constituent concern that kind of prompted this. Very good, thank you. Would you like to brief us and give us a narrative?
I'll do my briefing, but I think Mr. Cousins is going to give you the detail. This is a dairy farm in Ward One that is at the end of North River Road. And if you've never followed North River Road all the way out, you can't believe what's out there. It's incredible. And this is a farm family, I would say, that had a concern and the concern has to do with the fees that are charged in terms of building a new building. They want to build a new dairy barn and the reason they want to do it is so that they can have kind of free-roaming cows in the barn, so they're not chained up. I think it's a really good consideration. It's actually illegal in the state of Massachusetts to do that and this is somewhat in the anticipation of that, but also just to be better stewards of what it is that they're doing. So, I went out there with Mr. Cousins and the Lewis family and looked at the barn and saw what they were doing. They're in process right now of planning to build this additional barn. And as you can see, the fees, if they built this barn in Minnet, the fees would be, I can't remember, a tenth or something else.
Eight hundred dollars.
Sorry?
Eight hundred dollars versus five thousand.
Right. So, they're just asking, is it possible for us to consider that a fee for a barn, which takes a lot less time and energy in terms of going in and looking at things and approving things and all that, there's a lot less time that's involved on the part of the city for this. Also, there are not many individuals that are probably going to want to ask for this, so it's not as if we're losing lots and lots and lots of money if people are going to be building these large barns. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cousins.
Thank you. Over the last 10 or 15 years, we've really only seen a few to a handful of substantial agricultural buildings built in Auburn. A lot of farms are using older buildings that have existed for a long time. In this particular example, while we were out there with Counselor Lasagna, meeting with the farmer, it was clear that there are other communities out there, and Minnet was the example that we were given, that have already made a distinction in their building permit fee schedule between regular commercial buildings that cover everything from a new Walmart to a convenience store to an office building and agricultural buildings. And after the, we've had a lot of discussion about supporting agriculture in recent months. Thought this might be a way for the city to make a statement in support of agriculture, help agriculture financially for those few individuals that are making large investments, large barn buildings, the permit fees can be substantial. Because there are relatively few of them, we don't anticipate that this would have a huge impact on overall city permitting revenues. But if the council's interested in looking into this further, we can certainly provide the data from the past number of years, building permit fees, pull out the agricultural buildings and give you a sense of how much difference in revenue overall there would be at a future workshop and talk about the differences in inspection. An exposed framing building like a barn doesn't require the level of inspection that a hotel or an office building with very specific fire separation requirements and electrical and plumbing infrastructure, all of that requires. So, there's some logic to having a smaller permit fee for these buildings that are typically simpler. Other communities have broken it out as finished buildings versus interior unfinished buildings. Other communities have chosen to go specifically with a different permit fee for agricultural buildings, even if they are finished on the inside. But there are options and examples of what other communities have done to support this type of infrastructure.
And I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Cousins says in terms of, this is the kind of agriculture that we want to support in this community. They're paying taxes, they're making money, it's a large operation, it's a family-run operation, it's part of a milk co-op, and I think this is a way to show to people that we are supporting agriculture, large agriculture in this community.
Is there agriculture we don't want to support?
No. But I, one of the things that we talked about is not privileging small farms over large farms and this is a large farm that we want to support, I think.
Very good, thank you. Same rules as before. Are there any questions for Counselor Lasagna or Mr. Cousins? I will say, this excites me and you probably can see it on my face, but it really does because, A, you're providing opportunity. You're looking at tearing down regulatory hurdles and challenges that are confronting a business regardless of type or size. So, I'm very, very happy and Counselor Lasagna, hats off to you for, you know, working with the constituent, getting staff involved in doing this. This is, in my opinion, is where we need to be. To be competitively, to be competitive with outlaw municipalities, we need conformity. I will look at it differently and I'll kind of coach the council and inform them that we're not looking at any detracting of funds. Our job isn't to bring in fees. Our job is to promote economic opportunities. As a council, I think reviewing this will actually do that. Probably one of the largest, one of the largest changes to promote agriculture and coming on the heels of the revision to our ordinances on land usage, perfect timing. So, definitely sends a message. I'll ask the council this, you know, in lieu of a resolution or anything to that effect, would you like to see more and maybe some options on permitting, options that we might have as a city for any type of agricultural build-out? Yes? Are there any objections on that one? No? Okay. So, please do, staff, I think this is, it's good enough from this point, Mr. Manager, to proceed? Very good then. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you ever want to go and see the place, it's just something, the young couple who are out there, actually when they got married, they both brought their own cows to the marriage.
I'd actually like to see that. Very good, thank you both. Lastly, we have Ms. Earl. Mrs. Earl, I believe, is this the first time you spoke to the council? It might be. Tax-acquired properties, and for those of you who do not know, Mrs. Kelsey Earl is the Assistant, Executive Assistant to the City Manager's Office. Second time now.
Second time. I did ask Eric to accompany me just in case you have questions that I may not be overly prepared for. Hopefully I am, but just in case. So, because I presented, or we presented, six properties at the last council meeting for the previous council, we included them on the information sheet for this time as well, just so that you have that information before making a decision, because we are asking for a decision at this meeting. What we do is we present the properties at a workshop and at the next meeting is when we ask for action. It occurred at the last meeting inauguration, so it's been pushed a little bit, which is why we're here today. We also have three properties to newly present to you that do not require action today. They'll be at the next meeting. So, the six properties that were previously presented, we'll go over again for you so that you're aware of what we're looking for and asking for later in the meeting today for action. The six properties are Reginald Street, Court Street, 31 Beck, 16 Albiston, 72 Gill, and 325 Turner. They were all included in the packet. Would you like me to go over them with you? Do you have any additional questions before I do that?
I think just a really brief overview of those six existing would be great before you go on to the three new ones.
Okay. So, start here.
And Mrs. Earl, maybe the first one, not so brief, explaining the, kind of the process that staff goes through.
Sure.
You know, i.e. is it suitable for city use or so forth?
So, we have a committee, it's called the Tax Acquired Committee. It's made up of staff members. We review properties that have, are city-owned and have been tax-acquired. We review what we can do with them after they've been through their process and we now own them technically. The idea is to get them back on the tax roll. We're trying to recoup some fees, the taxes that are owed when we sell these properties. So, generally, minimum bids are put in to try and cover those things. After we go through, over each property, we fill out a property review form, which is included here in the packet. So, you can see what staff discussed, why we decided what we decided, if we want to sell to a Butters Only, have it as an open sealed bid, things like that. It includes information about how much in taxes are due, if there are any CDBG loan amounts that were due on the property and why we're asking for a certain minimum amount.
Yeah, no, just to add, if, all of the departments that would typically have concern about either keeping or disposing of a property are involved, so we get feedback from all of them to see if there are any city uses, if they're adjacent to other land that the city owns, if there are any plans like the comprehensive plan or strategic plan or other city plans that would warrant keeping a parcel versus selling it for some reason.
Now, thank you for that overview. That's good. Counsel, was that helpful on that process? Okay. So, did you have a question, Counselor Lasagna?
I have a general question. That's okay?
General question, okay, yeah, please. On the process.
When you go through each of them, it's very helpful that you have the tax-acquired property review form. I wonder if there can be added to this something that has to do with strategic plan, because some of the things we're talking about is green space and connectivity and that kind of thing, just to make sure that, and it shouldn't take long, that when you look at these properties, is it affected by or does it affect any of our strategic planning? Does that seem too onerous or inappropriate?
It certainly wouldn't hurt to discuss that and we can add that to the questions on the property review form, so the staff can go through it. It's kind of generally done as well, whether or not the city can use it, what that space would be best used for, but we can direct it more specifically towards strategic plan, I think.
Thank you.
So, the six properties that we previously presented and are asking for action on today, one of them is Reginald Street, property ID 191087. We are asking for that to be sold to a Butters Only. It does not hold value for the city. Because of its location, its value is mostly to a Butters, which is why that's put there. You have to go through that property for the neighbors. It's nothing, you would have to have a right of way. It's very difficult to sell, as is a Butters is the best bet. The other properties are Court Street, property ID 218017. That one is a piece of land. There's no bill. That one is piece of land, there's no building on it. The committee is recommending that it be sold as a package with 31 Beck because of its location. They are directly next door to each other, and the committee determined that would be the best value.
We think it has, that two of those combined has more development potential than either one by itself, so it makes a lot of sense to offer them together.
16 Alveston, that property, we had discussed splitting in half and selling to the Butters. That's another one that, because of its location, that was the best course of action, according to the committee.
I think if the council agrees they'd like to dispose of it, then we could offer it as a, as a single unit, but we could also offer it as two pieces to see if that generates more interest or more, more value in the bid process. The property's really split between an upper portion and a lower portion with a very steep slope in between those areas. The business at the top, Main Oxy, has expressed an interest in the upper portion, and the business on the bottom, the formerly Main Cage Factory, they do a lot of powder coating work, has expressed an interest in the lower part, but neither one of them would really have use of the whole parcel.
Once the council authorizes the sale of any of these properties, just so the council knows, council, the staff can have the flexibility, if you would, to split those parcels up and to maximize potential sale and sale price of these?
I think-
Without going into specifics.
We wouldn't want to do that in a vacuum, though. We think that's the best way to maximize the value, but we would want the council to be aware that we think that should be one of the options.
Aware but not specifically approved that as an option.
When we market it, we could market it both ways, as long as the council doesn't object to that.
Okay.
The fifth property was 72 Gill Street. That property does have a building on it. It is in the single-family zone, it would be best marketed as a single-family home. So the committee is recommending that we sell it by sealed bid with a minimum amount to cover any taxes that are currently due. The last tax payment was on April 23rd of 2018, so the committee thinks it's best to get that back on the tax roll. And the last of those six properties that we're asking for action on is 325 Turner Street. That is a piece of land of .11 acres. It does have a CDBG loan balance of $8,615. So the committee is requesting that it be sold by sealed bid, again, to cover any loan amounts or taxes that are due.
Counsel, is there any questions on the properties that are going to come out to action tonight in our agenda, before we move into the additionally, the new properties? Counselor Gary?
16 Newbury Street, I had questions.
So, I haven't quite gotten to those yet, that we're not asking for action on that one this evening, that will be at the next council meeting. So, Reginald, 0 Port, 31 Beck, oh, you said 16 Alveston, I'm sorry, I thought you said Newbury.
No, I'm-
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I have a question on Newbury Street.
Can we go into that next, or?
Yeah, I'll wait for that one.
Yeah, because Newbury Street isn't up here on this one. This is just the ones that were reviewed in the previous council that we'll be voting on tonight. The Newbury Street will be up for vote next meeting, after this review. So is there anything that, any questions on what we will be voting on tonight? None? Very good, thank you.
So the last of the properties that we're just presenting this evening and not asking for action for at the moment are 97 Riverside Drive, a property on Gammon Ave., and a piece on 16 Newbury. 97 Riverside Drive does have a building on the property. The building on site needs quite a bit of attention. It has a roof, a hole in the roof, which is allowing things to grow. So the committee is recommending the property be sold through a sealed bid process. We have the options to market as-is or to demo the building and then market that piece of property. We're asking for input on that, of how we should, or how you feel we should handle that. It is in the opportunity zone, which means it will be an extremely marketable parcel of land. That leaves it open for more of our residents to be able to obtain loans and rehab the It currently has a balance of $12,052 in taxes. Any questions on that one, or may I move to the next?
Let's go to the next, and we'll come back to the ones that you need council recommendations on.
Sure.
Afterwards.
Property on Gammon Avenue, property ID is 249093, so it doesn't have an actual address. We are, the committee's recommending that it be sold by sealed bid to a Butters. It is a .02 acre piece of property.
It's a very small lot, steep slopes, and it's not developable by itself, so ideally it would end up being merged with an abutting parcel.
It has a balance of $380 that we would be looking to recoup. The current assessed value of the land is 700, so it wouldn't be a necessarily marketable piece of property, but could provide great value to those Butters. The last one we have is a piece, a 609.6 square foot piece at 16 Newbury. This property came up because a resident put in a written request asking to purchase this piece of the property. They own a building at the adjacent lot of 22 Newbury Street. Their request is so that they can develop their lot from a two-unit to a three-unit dwelling. Because of zoning requirements, they can't do that without that piece of land. So again, it's a 609 square foot piece. They require 8,000 square feet to transform that, and they currently have 7,400 square feet. So it would be providing an opportunity for them to develop, as well as that piece does not negatively affect 16 Newbury. So removing that 609 square feet does not change 16 Newbury from being able to be developed or change its value as far as what zone it's in and what can be done there.
A previous council had looked at this parcel, the larger parcel, and because it's adjacent to Bonnie Park and connects to Bonnie Park to Newbury Street, if, there's no physical connection right now, but it abuts both of those, they had decided to hang on to it at that time and use it for, potentially for future residential development. When this abutter approached us, we did the density calculations in that zone. You need 5,000 square feet of lot area for the first dwelling unit and 1,500 square feet for each additional dwelling unit. They're only 600 square feet short of being able to add another unit on their property, and we need to do the math on the city-owned property next door. It doesn't reduce that lot size enough to affect the number of units that would be allowed on that parcel, so we really didn't see this as a loss in any way, as far as the city's value. But it did allow for one more new market rate unit and a existing private property owner to make that investment and hopefully realize some gains from it.
So the committee, after review, has recommended that that piece, that 609.6 square foot piece that's indicated on the map, be sold to the requesters at their proposed price. Again, that's up for your comments.
Counsel, any, any comments on these properties? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remembered that this property owner had come to the city wanting us to do that, and the previous council said no, they wanted to keep it intact, something to do with right-of-ways and things.
So that, that's a different property owner. We had given an annual license to a different property owner to utilize a portion of this land for their driveway.
Right.
But the council at the time wanted to preserve the ability to develop it, so that can be ended with a 30-day notice at any time, but he does currently use a piece of the parcel for his driveway off of Newbury Street. He also has access off the backside, near Bonnie Park. But that is a different property owner than is making this request now.
So it would not, discontinuing use of that driveway would not land-lock his property?
It would not.
Okay, so it's more of a convenience and a necessity, at this point?
Yeah. His house lot itself doesn't have frontage on Newbury, but his driveway comes in through the parking lot that serves Bonnie Park.
Thank you. Question, though, on the, on the split off of land and the unsolicited offer of $1,000, does that cover legal costs in order to split that parcel out from the main parcel? Or would that be in addition to covering legal costs, i.e. deeding and redrafting, survey, et cetera?
I think we would expect the purchaser to cover those costs in addition to the purchase price. That's what we had talked about, as staff.
Let's, then, you, you obviously, at this point, we need to give some sort of direction. Are there any more questions on this piece? We can move backwards from this piece, back to the first piece you talked about. Counselor Lasagna?
This is about the Newbury Street property. It doesn't seem this way from looking at the web map, but this would not prevent access to the river from the Bonnie Park in that area. We don't have access through there. The reason I'm asking is it's part of that going back to connectivity and all of that, and that's, the properties along there have beautiful views and access to the river, and I don't want to cut that off from the public.
This, this would not affect that.
What's the ass, I see the assessed-
Counselor Boss?
Thank you. I see the assessed value for the full parcel, what's the assessed value for the portion that's being requested?
It's such, it's such a small strip, I don't think it'd be very much, but we could have the assessor estimate that value. It's about a six-foot wide by 100-foot-long strip that-
Arrow.
-I don't think would have much value to anybody but the two abutting parcels, the one that the city owned and this other abutter. But we could, we could ask them to estimate that number.
Any more questions on this property? Because I'm going to, got to ask for a straw poll here, councilors. Do you, do you all agree with the concept of moving forward and splitting the Newbury property into two properties, both marketable, or one marketable, one allowing growth to happen? Yeah? Makes sense? Very good.
I've got questions about it, because I think it should be some sort of access through Bonnie, connect Bonnie Park to Newbury Street, if we're intending to do a walkway around in there. And if we're going to try to make one person whole so that he can expand his business, fine, I mean, his home, that's fine, because that'll improve the neighborhood. But we should also take in consideration that other person and his needs of getting in and out, as well as preserving our corridor. So I'd like to hold on to the property, make that gentleman whole that has, that needs the right-of-way, as well as doing this land.
I think that we can, at this point, remember, this is just a directional move for staff to explore this further, i.e. find out the costs, is the potential buyer willing to pay for the survey work, closing costs, in addition to the $1,000 unsolicited offer. And let's look at those points, too. We'll always vote on the final action during our next meeting, or whenever you have the data and ready to present. Okay? Makes sense, folks? Good there. Let's move back, there's a couple of the decision points, I'm sorry, that you needed us to make. Could you review those with us again, Kelsey?
Which ones we are asking for? Well, we went over Alveston, that's one of the ones we were looking for direction on, but looking to see if the council would, what the council would like us to do, or if we have free rein to see if we should sell it as one lot or separate-
Talk about with Beck, I'm sorry, Alveston with Beck?
Port and Beck.
Beck and Court.
Beck and Court, okay.
Beck and Court.
A lot of names going around, but Beck and Court?
Yes. Beck and Court, the committee had recommended selling together.
Okay, and you do, and you do not need any action or direction from the city in order to move forward on that one, of course, it's here. Now, we'll, go back to Alveston again, I'm sorry?
Alveston is the property that the staff was determining whether we should split and sell to the Butters or sell as one property, which we could certainly market as both, as Eric mentioned.
Counsel, any thoughts on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I think we should give them the only way to do that, because one of the discussions we've had in the past is that we're not real estate agents. So we don't want to tie the hands of the planning department or economic development if there are different ways that you think you can sell these, because again, that's not our job necessarily, so we want to make sure that it's easy for you all to do this.
So each of these properties, we had requested to be sold by sealed bid, whether to a Butters or just out as general sealed bid. The only one that was specifically to a Butters was Reginald, which you'll see later in the meeting, the request for sale.
Any other comments on this property? General recommendation is give staff the flexibility to move ahead and do what they see best to maximize revenue and move these properties back on the books. Fair enough, okay? Is there anything else?
That was the end of my list for this evening.
That's a lot, that's, that's good. And just some background for the new councilors to know, up until about, what, a year and a half ago, we weren't moving property, correct, Mr. Manager? We were not moving property back onto the books, so there was a lot of, the past council dealt with this a lot, and I'm, two and a half years ago, we started this process, so we're now, the cleanup and kind of, we're caught up and we're just kind of maintaining, correct? Feeling good about everything?
At the, at the next meeting, when we have the properties that we're looking to get action on, that workshop, we, the committee planned on updating the council on where we started and where we're at today.
Okay, very good. Perfect. Thank you very much, both of you. Good evening. Okay, considering the time, I'll move things around a little bit, unless the council has an objection, which you can duly note when we bring this up to a vote, but I'd like to entertain basically a motion to go into executive session, basically the last executive session. I take that back, we're going to do a second executive session? You want to do?
This is an executive session. This is all.
I'd like to entertain a motion at this point to consult with our attorneys, an executive session about our legal rights and responsibilities.
So moved.
Second. You two almost sound alike. I've got a motion from Counselor Lasagna and a second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? None being? We're now in executive session by a bonus 7-0. Thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the first meeting of the new city council for the year 2020. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you very much for coming tonight, it's January 6th, I didn't say that earlier, we're going to move on to the agenda, we have one consent item on the agenda tonight, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the consent items to be considered a new business for a quick discussion.
I have a motion by Councilor Zani to move the consent item to new business, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councilor Gary, all those in favor of moving consent to new business, please raise your hand. All those opposed, abstain, none being, passes by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have the minutes for the December 2nd, 2019, regular council meeting, are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2019, regular city council meeting, do I have a, excuse me, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion for Councilor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilor Carrier, please excuse me if I forget your names, it might take me a couple meetings to get them all. Carrier, I got that one right. I have a motion for Councilor Walker, second by Councilor Carrier, show of hands, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, opposed, abstain, none being, minutes are accepted by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have the minutes for the December 9th, 2019, special council meeting, are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the December 9th, 2019, regular city council meeting.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion for Councilor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilor McLeod. All those in favor? Opposed, abstain, none being, passes by a vote of seven zero. Next, we have the minutes of the December 16th, 2019 inaugural meeting, are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the inaugural council meeting, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I got Councilor Boss, so I have a second. Second by Councilor Milks, all those...
Carrier, oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
No, no, I got that one right, I haven't failed yet, but thank you for keeping me on my toes. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the inaugural, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstain, none being, the minutes are accepted by seven zero. I thought for a second you guys were going to object to me being sworn in. Now on to communications, presentations, and recognition, before we get started, there's going to be some, just for the, primarily for the public as well as the new council, we are going to move to really make sure that citywide communications, presentations, and recognitions happen here in this moment and this agenda item going forward. So as we work into the session, just remember if you have any, if you have any communications, presentations, or specific recognitions, get them out to myself and the city manager prior to the meeting start, that way we can call on you to go ahead and do that. So, we're going to start off with the introduction of department directors by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have most of our department directors and key staff here, this is a team effort, as all of you know, we need everyone at every level of this organization to be working hard, doing the best they can, it takes everyone giving a hundred percent for us to be successful, the folks that were here tonight are the people that have the responsibility of supervising, overseeing, managing the activities we have, and it's my pleasure to introduce them, so, this is a test for me, hopefully I don't forget somebody's name. So, in no particular order, I'm going to start with Sabrina Best, Sabrina Best is our recreation director, Sabrina, you want to stand? Sabrina Best, thank you, that's good. Michael Malloy is the city attorney, he is your attorney, he works closely with Phil and myself on a myriad of issues and works with the various departments. Going across the row, Holly Olivier, Holly is the general assistance director. Chris Muma is the human resources director. And then, the fire chief, Chief Bob Chase, is our fire chief. Jason Bowen, the police chief. Eric Cousins is the deputy economic community development director. Dan Goyette is hiding, Dan's the public works director, I could see you, Dan. Liz Allen is our compliance and communications manager. And Kelsey Earl, you heard from earlier, she's the executive assistant city manager's office. Amy Nay is the library director. Mark Goslin, you're going to hear from in a few moments, Mark is the executive director of municipal partnerships and sports tourism, say that fast twice. Jeremy Gatgum is the deputy recreation director. Roy Mushlin is the manager of the Norway Savings Bank Arena. And going over here to my left, Michael Chammings, you know, the economic community development director, Sue Clemens Delaire, our city clerk, Jill Eastman, our finance director, Phil Crowell, who will be back maybe from the Lewiston inauguration if it doesn't last too long, assistant city manager. So, very happy to have all these folks on our team and to work with them, Phil and I feel very fortunate and blessed to have this group of people to work with, they do a great job and they inspire us every day. I don't think I missed anybody, did I miss anybody? So, thank you, everybody. I also want to mention, we have a tentative schedule through the end of June that we've been working on, each counselor, the mayor has that in front of them, department directors are aware of the schedule, should be, I know Phil has worked with you on the schedule, Brian I think is trying to put it up on the screen, it's a busy schedule, we have, of course, tonight, then we have next Monday with a public works tour and orientation, strategic plan will be continued at that location, and look forward to doing that, we have a retreat on January 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We'll start with probably muffins in the morning, we'll do a brunch, we look forward to that, that's at Central Main Community College. Then, we have a regular meeting that will be held on January 27th, we'll be doing a police department tour and orientation beginning at 5:00, and then we'll have a budget format workshop. And then, what that is going to be about is Jill, as the finance director, is going to walk you through the structure of the budget, give you an overview on that. Then, February 3rd, we have another regular meeting, we'll do an Auburn Hall tour, we'll do an orientation, the city clerk's office, human resources, finance, IT, general assistance, and city manager's office. Then, February 10th, we have a fire department tour and orientation. Then, on February 24th, we're doing a joint discussion with the school committee. Then, what we're doing on March 2nd is a review or discussion on the comp plan and what we need to do to update that with a charter discussion. March 9th, at 5:00, we're going to be doing tours of Norway Savings Bank Arena, Hasty Recreation, Senior Center, the turf facility, and we'll have an orientation as well when we do that. Then, we have a regular meeting on March 16th, then March 23rd, we have a joint CIP presentation and discussion with the school committee. And then, April 6th, the city manager's preliminary budget, school budget discussion, and then, April 9th, the CIP presentation, and that will continue with a budget workshop, various departments, city clerk, city manager, we'll get into the county tax, debt service, economic community development, emergency reserve, facilities and finance, where can you go to have this much fun? Council budget discussion, follow-up on departments, and then, April 13th, budget workshop, fire EMS, fringe benefits, health and human services, HR, IT, intergovernmental, mayor and council, and then there will be council budget discussion, April 16th, budget workshop, police, library, public works, recreation, solid waste, we'll talk about TIFs, tax increment, finance, tool that we use, water and sewer, workers' comp, council budget discussion will follow that. And April 27th, the manager's final proposed budget, council budget discussion will follow that. Then we get into May, council budget discussion, May 4th, adopt the school budget, May 11th, the special meeting, and then adopt the CIP plan, May 18th. And then, June 1st, public hearing and first reading on appropriation resolve and CIP bonding, school budget election will be June 9th, and then June 15th will be the second reading on the appropriation resolve and CIP bonding. So, there's the schedule, and we'll work with you with the support of all the department directors and their staff in having these tours and orientations, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, don't divide your hours by the annual pay you receive, or else we'll be breaking the law. If there's any questions with the schedule, by all means, please let us know, we know that you will not be able to hit every single one of these, okay? That's okay, that's why we have minutes, and we'll try to brief you in, always reach out to me to, you know, give you an update on what went on and so forth, either before or after. Thank you very much. So, next, communication, planning board memo. Mr. Chammings, Director of Economic Community Development, if you could please just give us a brief presentation on planning board recommendation with regards to Merrill Road.
Good evening, mayor and council members, we received a memo from the planning board, hopefully you had a chance to read that, it's dated October 10th, but I don't believe we got it to sometime after that and signed, so, it's a communication, and when my planner received it, she asked, what do I do with this communication, and I advised it, she bring it to the city manager to put on for communications to go to the whole board, because it is a communication to the council, and we obviously like to keep the city manager's office aware of anything that goes to the city council. So, looking at the issue here is the Merrill Road and Hotel Road in Auburn, is the amount of trips that are being generated, so this communication, what we're looking at is if the council is interested in bringing this forward or taking some action, or a lot of times these communications are brought forward, the council reads these, and there's no action taken on them. The staff, in my office share some of these concerns, we've been talking about the issue on that road for several years, so if the council wished to bring this to a workshop, we would certainly be willing to do that, to show some of the options of making that road safer, we've talked about putting a third lane exiting that road, and there are some obligations from the businesses down there such as to toddle in once they hit a certain road count that they would have some obligation to pay towards that expansion, but we also believe because of the expansions going on down on that road commercially, that we have a chance to capture some of that value, new added value, with the tax shift, help pay for that and not put the burden on the one taxpayer out there. So, if it's a consensus of the board to have this, bring this to a future workshop, to explain the issues on that road, where we're at, we would certainly be glad to do that because we do support the planning board and some of their concerns.
Very good, thank you very much. Again, this is different than a workshop, so we're not going to have a back and forth, we will take this communication and talk about it during our workshop, especially specifically the one discussing our strategic plan, and see how it layers in there if at all. Thank you very much, Mr. Chammings. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Mark Goslin, who, just, I can't even remember his title so long, but it will be concerning recreation and sports tourism. Mr. Goslin, if you could just take a moment and introduce the rest of your staff that's with you tonight.
Sure thing. Mayor, councilors, good to see you, welcome, city manager, Peter Crane, thank you for this time, I think it's, we always want to keep the group up to date with what's going on, I think... I think it's also helpful for the group to hear some of the intricacies of the Department and what we're currently doing. So, this is kind of a mixture of an update for current Councillors who already know kind of who we are and what we're doing, but also for the new Councillors, some introductory-type information about our department, the breakdown of our department, but then also kind of the future of what we see for 2020. So, I thought that'd be really helpful. To my right, well, up here with me is kind of our Leadership Team with the Department, who these individuals I work closely with, day in and day out. To my left, I got Rory Mushlin, who's our General Manager over at the Norway Savings Bank Arena. Sabrina Best, our Recreation Director. And then, to the far right, we have Jeremy Gatgum. He's our General Manager at the Ingersoll Turf Facility, but also our, you know, Superintendent of Recreation. So, these three individuals are key to the success that we're having, because these three individuals are the ones that actually work with our other staff, our coordinators. And, you know, just real briefly, we're going to go through kind of an introduction, kind of an organizational structure of the Department, and then we'll do some updates. Sabrina will provide some updates on Recreation and our new Senior Center. Jeremy will provide a quick update on Ingersoll. Sorry, I'm getting confused. Jeremy is going to do the update to Ingersoll. Rory's going to do our update to Norway. I have some other updates that I'd like to share. And then, at the end, want to talk about, we've developed an Internal Business Action Plan that I want to share with the group that, as we get into 2020, is an internal document that we're going to use. So, real quickly, Overview of Our Department. You see the Leadership Team that's up here right now. This does not include our whole team. I mean, our whole team is pretty extensive. We have a lot of great individuals that work with us, especially our rec programmers that are on our boots on the ground, that are, you know, working, you know, running youth program, adult program, senior programs. And, you know, they're really key to the success of the Department as well. But we also have our couple Administrative Assistants. We also have, over at the Arena, we have two full-time staff over there that helps Rory on the day-to-day operations of the Norway Savings Bank Arena. And this list doesn't also include the volunteers and all the coaches that also help make up the Recreation Department. So, we're pretty lucky to have a pretty dedicated and passionate group that, you know, works very closely together, and they work very well together. But I just wanted to provide a quick snapshot, so you guys can see the organizational structure and kind of, you know, understand it, and then just kind of allow you kind of see how we flow on a day-to-day basis, you know, from a management level all the way down to our volunteers. I'll let Sabrina do the next two slides, which are some updates on our Recreation Program, and then also updates on the Senior Center.
Thank you. So, to start off with the new joint effort, some of the new things that we're looking to do is streamline our communications, which, right now, between the three different divisions, we are operating four different software systems, which means four different websites and communication methods. So, updating into one system that we can use across the board is really, really critical in order for us to be efficient and be able to help each other out, which is the goal of our one vision and our one department. With our programming, we have well over 78 different programs. Every year, in the budget, we put out a list of each of those programs, and we do a breakdown of how many participants the past year that engaged in that activity, as well as all the revenue and the expenses. So, that way, everyone can kind of get that good checks and balances to get an understanding of, are these programs successful? Are they not? Are we offering enough of each division of the different types? Again, we have youth, we have youth sports, we have family, adult sports, and then we have this 50 and over, senior, adult leisure, age-friendly type of programming on top of our special events. Facility Update. With Recreation, we encompass a lot of different facilities. And some of them are 100% recreation-scheduled, maintained, operated, top to bottom. Others are 50/50. We work with local organization, or we are partnering with another department within the city. So, just to get a sense and idea of, there's the Hasty Community Center, the Senior Community Center. We have a pond building down in Pettingill Park. There's Festival Plaza, the Municipal Beach Tot Lot. Then, there's our different fields, which includes the Chestnut Field, which is by the PAL Center, the Gully Basketball Courts. We have two fields down in Pettingill Park, a baseball and a softball one, Lakeview and Tribune. I'm probably forgetting a bunch, but just to give you an idea, that's a lot that kind of encompasses within our department. On top of, obviously, Ingersoll and Norway. With the CIP projects, there's quite a few that are coming up, a lot of them around the maintenance and upkeep of some of these facilities. A great example is one of our very successful new programs is a men's Draft League Slow Pitch Softball League. It's the only one in the state right now, and it's grown over the last three years from eight teams to 12 teams, and we've added a senior division. We can only grow this program as far as we have field time. That's really kind of one of our limits. And what makes this specific program unique and forward-thinking is that we are doing live stats. This is a true draft league, which is different than any other one that's gone on in the state. And we are now looking into doing live game feeds, so people can watch this from wherever. So, being able to have those resources within that program at one field is amazing. But if we are now able, which through this current CIP, we are looking at converting the baseball field in Pettingill to a softball field. That in itself, in theory, gives us double the amount of times we can have games. That doubles the amount of participants and the amount of teams, and so on and so forth. We engage everyone from up in the Bangor-Augusta-Waterville area to the Saco-Bitterford. They're coming all the way to Auburn to play these games. That's just one example of how innovative the staff is really trying to be with their programming. On top of that, we have a bunch of different events. I think that the, one of this past year's most notable one is the 150th Celebration. The Rec Department definitely took a big undertaking in helping out with a lot of those events, as well as our annual ones, which are Summer/Winter Fest. They're more of community-driven activities, as opposed to the rec putting on everything. The Holiday Parade, we partner really closely with the City of Lewiston on. And a newer one that brings a new type of event that the Recreation hasn't really looked at in the past is the Art in the Park. A well-rounded rec department doesn't just offer all the programs and services, but it also touches upon the culture, the art, the history, and those kinds of things. Lastly, and again, I think all of us, we could talk forever about this stuff, so to try and condense this is a little hard, but Community Connections is really big for us. We work really closely with the School Department, the PAL Center, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, Seniors Plus. We work with JMF Murphy Homes. There's a group of local home-school individuals that come in and use our space, the Special Olympics. This list could go on, but we do try and remember that we are a community center, and it's not just for us to program out of. We need to allow and open those doors so that we, those already well-established organizations or programs can also have the same access to what we provide. One thing I didn't talk about so far is our brand-new facility down there that has a lot of great community support and momentum going forward. So, that is the Auburn Senior Community Center. Just recently opened up in November, and already it has a well-booked schedule. We have a monthly calendar that we post on the website, right now, January and February up there. And you'll see, if you look at that, there's three main tenants that are utilizing this facility right now. One is the Auburn Rec Department. The other is the First Auburn Senior Group. They have been home-based out of Pettingill Park for years. And then, the other one is the Age Friendly Committee with their new programming and meetings and stuff. We hosted the inauguration, and we need to be mindful that this center is obviously geared, and it's supposed to be used for the senior population first and foremost. So, that doesn't leave a lot of room for outside rentals to build up some, you know, revenue that's coming in. So, we have to be unique in that way, which is great, because Mark is great at what he does. And being able to host the LA Chamber Business After Hours would really help expose, because it's our partnerships and our community members that will really help support us in that sense. So, that is definitely something where, again, team effort up here. Everyone comes with their strengths, and we work together and kind of make it work.
Excellent. Jeremy's going to touch upon Ingersoll real quickly.
So, Ingersoll opened in the fall of 2015, so we're entering our fifth indoor season at this point. We're currently running at about a 90% capacity during our peak season, which is at November through April, sometimes May, depending on the springtime. I think I'm the only one in the city that's happy when we have snow and rain come March and April. It just keeps people inside longer and keeps us busy. Yeah, definitely not Dan. One of our bigger programs that we have started, we're actually in our third season right now, is our Youth Indoor Softball League. It actually just started two days ago, this past Saturday. This year, we actually have 208 girls. They're from all over the state. They're traveling far from Augusta, Buckfield, Richmond, as far south as the Saco-Portland area. They're coming up here to play live games. We do two live games, every hour, hour and a half-ish. Yep, youth softball, sorry. It started in 2018. We had 149 girls and 14 teams. Last year, it grew to 160 girls, 16 teams. And this year, we're at 108 girls, 19 teams. We're pretty much at capacity right now. The only way we could expand that is to go additional days or start to, and I don't like to use the word "kick out" some of our renters, but push them aside to grow this program. They're currently going from 1:00 in the afternoon till 9:00 p.m. Obviously, the younger girls, they play earlier. The high school age, they play later at night. We're at the point now where, if we want that to continue to grow, we have to start shifting things around to accommodate them. Another big area is our indoor batting cages. They're borderline sold out for the entire winter. Just today, I had to turn away numerous requests for batting cage time, both baseball, softball, youth, adult, you name it. It ties in with the rec and their adult softball leagues. They're inside all winter long, preparing to get on the field, whether it's co-ed, whether it's men, whether it's draft league players. They're looking to get in the batting cages all hours of the day. I've had requests that come in at midnight until 1:00 a.m. to hit, because that's all we had available. And some of these people are, if die hard enough, to actually say, "Yep, we'll definitely take it." So, and a new event that is coming up, actually next month, it's a high school boys and girls recruiting event. It's being run by Dartmouth University, but they actually just got a bunch of extra colleges on board to come here. They'll be, it's February 16th, I believe. It's a Sunday. They'll be here from 12:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. UNH, Bates, Trinity, Colby, UMass, Franklin Pierce, and again, Dartmouth is the big one, coming to recruit all the high school soccer players here in the state. I've reached out to our contacts that we have for our Youth Indoor High School Soccer League. Everybody's really excited to have some big-name D1 colleges coming to town to hopefully sign a couple of kids up. But that's pretty much a rundown on Ingersoll at this point. Like Sabrina said, we could talk about what we have and how we've grown for hours and upon hours, but these are some of the big, big key facts we have for this current indoor season.
Up in Norway, we're kind of right in the heart of our season. We're exactly at the midpoint of the high school hockey season. We're currently running at a 5% increase in our ice usage overall. That includes the addition of our Friday Night and Sunday Night Adult Hockey Program. Went from one league combined to two separate leagues, but within that, they've actually increased number of teams on both sides. So, our adult hockey usage is up. DJ Skate. So, our DJ Skate, we started at the beginning of November. It was something that, like Sabrina said, we wanted to really make sure we opened up our building to the community. It's a community building. We were looking to find other ways to include especially that middle school, high school age group to keep them, you know, in the middle of the winter, off the streets, and in something constructive. So, we partnered with DJ Greg Young, who does, brings out the DJ. We have moving lights and turn off the lights and kind of do like a disco night, which has become really popular. We're averaging 60 to 70 skaters every Friday night currently, and continuing to build. Every week, we kind of see a small increase in that number. And quite frankly, we've also seen some families, which wasn't what we were expecting. We were expecting kind of that ninth, 10th, 11th grade crowd, but we've seen a lot of families come out, parents with their kids. We've hosted a number of birthday parties now on Friday nights to enhance that. So, we've been very pleased with that and are looking to continue that through at least the beginning of March, when things start to warm up. And then, we'll kind of make a decision as we go from there. Six Weeks of Ice Use is booked in the summer. So, last summer, we had one week. Planet Hockey came out from the Midwest. They're kind of based California, but run a lot of their programs in the Midwest. Planet Hockey came out and ran one week of summer camp last year. To date, we have six consecutive weeks of camp booked. Planet Hockey decided not to return, which is okay. But Dan Hodge, who's involved in the hockey community here, he runs a program called Hodge Hockey. He booked five of those weeks. The Gladiators have a week. We also have a group coming up from New York called, or sorry, out of Virginia called Northern Roots, and they've booked one of the later weeks in August. So, we're really excited to kind of continue to see the growth. And just today, I had a great conversation with the Gladiators about possibly running a summer youth league, which is something that currently runs in Augusta. They haven't been pleased with the program and are looking to possibly change that and change venues, which would be a great boost for us, which would host Mites, Squirts, Pee Wees, and Bantams, so the youngest four divisions, all-inclusive. And if we could run six teams at every division throughout the summer, that would be huge for us as well. And then, the Dunkin' Munchkin Mites Jamboree. We have 44 teams of eight-year-olds that'll be in the building the weekend of the 17th, 18th, and 19th.
What are those dates? What are those dates again?
17th, 18th, and 19th of January. So, coming right up here very quickly. But that's an event that has slowly progressed. They've always been very successful. Last year, we capped it at 40 teams. They ended up going to 36. This year, we looked at ways to expand it, possibly including that Monday, being that it's the holiday. And we were able to increase that number to 44 teams. We've had to split the building. So, basically, what we're doing is we're running a morning session on Saturday and then an evening session. So, only that set of teams in the morning will come in. That way, locker rooms can be shared appropriately versus trying to cram pack five or six teams in a room. We're limiting that to two, maybe three, if we absolutely have to. So, we're really excited about that process as well. You know, overall, I think Norway's in good shape. I like the progression that we've made and looking forward to continuing to get better every day.
So, to kind of piggyback, some of the things that we're doing is also the event side of things. This team right here does some great things from a standpoint of some of the citywide events. New Year's Auburn was one that we just experienced again this past year, which went very well. You know, we have a lot of great partners that support that. You know, we want to say thank you to Mapleway Dental and Hilton Garden Inn, who stepped up and provided some financial assistance to support the event. If you didn't take your picture in the smiley selfie frame, shame on you if you weren't there. But no, you know, it was a great event. I think it's something that we're going to continue to build and do some great things with. And it's something that, you know, very proud to see the community come out and just, you know... Someone who I know from the hockey world that was there, he told me, he goes, "I saw this late last year, and I saw it earlier this year from a marketing standpoint." And he said, "Shame on me if I don't go, because I kind of felt bad that I didn't go last year." You know, and I'm here this year." And he actually had his brother from California here at the same time. And, you know, his brother said, raving, you know, had raving reviews of the event. So, we're very fortunate to start getting into this side of the world, and we have some great facilities for it. You know, I don't know if you know, but we, you know, we have a long-term relationship with the Main Campgrounds Association and do the largest main RV show at the Norway Savings Bank Arena. A lot of great vendors, a lot of great people come from, you know, all over Maine and some from New Hampshire that come to the show. Last year, we did our first concert, you know, in partnership with LA Harley and The Wolf, and we're hoping to continue that relationship this year. Unveiling it tonight, this is the first time that I've set it out in public. And March 28th and 29th, we're going to be hosting the first-ever Maine Golf Show over at the Arena in partnership with some great people who we're working with to hopefully run a great event and will get people excited. I think it's a good time of year to hold it, as people are kind of getting itchy from the, you know, getting itchy from the winter, and, you know, they're kind of looking at, maybe looking to play some golf or get ready to play some golf, or just in general, just to come see and what's going on from that standpoint in that world. The upper right-hand corner, you see a kind of a hockey player, but it's actually a roller hockey, a roller hockey player. This coming June, we're hosting the Board of Directors. We had to put in a bid to host this group. We won the opportunity to bring this group to Auburn through a small bid process. It's the National Collegiate Roller Hockey Association. We're putting in a bid to host the... We're putting in a bid to host the either 2022, I don't think it's going to be 2021, it'll be a quick turnaround, but probably most likely 2022 National Collegiate Roller Hockey National Championship at the arena. And that's for Division I, Division II, and Division III universities. Just to let you know, there's not one roller hockey team here in the state. The closest team that plays roller hockey is, I think, I believe, is Boston University or UNH. So, the majority of the teams that will be coming to here will be from away. It'll be a 10-day, 12-day event. Both, both sides will be utilized, and, you know, it'll be fun talking about filling up hotel rooms and doing something great for the community. And we're looking at other events like this from a sports tourism standpoint to start making, you know, making Auburn kind of like a place to be for these types of activities and events, because we have the team to do it. We have a nice, we have a couple of nice facilities that we really want to, you know, tote and show off and know that we can do a great job from the event side of things. From a community partnership standpoint, we wanted to share some numbers with the council as it relates to those people who support and invest in the city. These partnerships, if, before, it was mainly just Norway. Now that we're a brand-new department as it relates to some of the facilities that we have and everything's all-encompassing, we're able to customize our relationships for our partners to hopefully, when they invest with us, what we're going to do with them is customize a partnership that kind of hits home with their objectives here in the community. And I think we're doing a good job with that because of the money that actually is already coming in. I mean, we're, in, in this year's budget, we, we hit, we set a goal for $230,000 in corporate partnership dollars. We're already at $223,700, so we're not far off that goal. Same thing with Ingersoll. We set a goal for, you know, $25,000. We're at $19,850. But I think the biggest, the biggest stat here, the biggest telling point is, we're now able to, to customize these relationships and include things like the Senior Center, include PAL, include, you know, any type of event, like some might be specific to the Maine Golf Show, and say, "Look, that's a great event. I want to be part of that." But how else can I be, how, how else can I help Auburn? How else can I invest in something that, in the community that I live in and work in and, and, and play in? So, I think a lot of this is the, the work of this group has allowed us to, you know, we have a lot of great proposals that are out to some great companies like McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts brands, and they're all reviewing proposals right now from us. Giffords Ice Cream, you know, these are all possible great partners that might be coming on board this year, because we were able to sit down and have a meeting and discussion with them and say, you know, "What do you want out of the city of Auburn? You, you work here. You have your business here. How can, how can we help? You know, and how can we be that good partner for you?" You know, and, and I think a lot of it is a, we're able to share, share a lot of different things with them from a standpoint of all-age groups, sports-related, non-sports-related, you know, that sort of thing. So, I think it's a good testament of where we're going with our community partnerships. Lastly, we've created an internal document. I wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of what that document looks like and what's in it. So, we created a business action plan for this year. In that business action plan, you know, there is a couple introductory-type pages that share organizational chart information, which is what I shared with you tonight, our mission, staff information. It moves into kind of a recreation department where it talks about policies, program descriptions, and details of what we're doing this year. Everything from, you know, different capacities, you know, for different programs out of those 78 programs, you know, we have all the, the max capacities, minimum capacities, rates. And this internal document is allowing, is going to allow us to kind of manage and figure out where we're going, how we're doing it, and what can we do better in the future. Has facilities information with it, also group, group and user data, so it, it's allowing us to help track in the future how many people are using our facilities, how many new, how many new users we've had. If we've lost any user groups, we'll be able to analyze that. Budget information, right now, there's a placeholder for that, because we're going through our budget this year, so we just put in last year's budgets to work from. But as soon as the new budget comes in, that new budget goes straight into the business action plan, so that we can make sure that we hold ourselves accountable to what we're doing as a department. Special events, you know, an ongoing list of what we're doing annually is in there, as well as a, a sports tourism area, defining what sports tourism is to us. What, what does it mean if we have sports tourists here? What are the social, the social benefits from having social tourism? The cost benefits? And of course, there's expenditures, revenues, those types of things that are within that internal document. And then the community partnership slide that I just showed you was just a real snapshot, a small snapshot of that, but it's really talking about our philosophy, our objectives, our strategies around what we're doing with our community partners. So, this internal document is, we're going to use it internally as a working document. It's never going to be something that's going to be set in stone. It's going to be something that's going to be changing. It's going to be a living document where every year, we're going to look at it, adapt it, and making sure that we're listening to what our community wants, and then hopefully we become a better department because of it.
Good. But you're on a roll.
We could go off.
Yeah, we could. I mean, like, we talked about it this afternoon, and we were just, we went through a brainstorm of less, well, okay, well, if we talk about all this, we'll be here for 45 minutes, so we just wanted to try to a quick snapshot.
Thank you all very much for that snapshot. Hopefully, it was beneficial to the council. It's always good to start off with some positive communication.
And just one thing, and also when we do the tour, we're also going to, you know, provide a, you know, hopefully a little deeper snapshot into what each of the facility's doing, and you guys are able, it's a good time for us to kind of dig into maybe even some brainstorming and some questions about what's going on at each facility, and we look forward to, look forward to March to showing you, showing you those areas.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, communications. Myself discussing my oral appointments. I'm going to communicate from up here on the deus. So, I will state, kind of as a precursor to this communication, it's been a very cathartic process, I believe, over the last few weeks since the election, really digging down, and staff taking the lead on this, digging down into the charter, ordinances, bylaws, precedents, and trying to find out exactly how we do appointments, and to which committees, and what is the right way. And after reviewing everything with staff, I was, I was pretty amazed to see what we've been doing that we probably shouldn't have been doing, what we need to be doing that we haven't, and how do we make this process better? I'll get to that last point in a second. One thing is, though, right now, there are two sections of appointments. One section of appointment are direct appointments. They're basically my appointments of people that attend meetings on my behalf, mayoral appointments. One and the most public one is obviously my representative to the school board, which is Brian Carrier, which was voted on during the inauguration. There are also four other boards and committees that by charter, I appoint directly to without council vote or confirmation. The Appointment Committee, and I'll announce those now. The Appointment Committee, Stephen Milks, Leroy Walker, and Brian Carrier. Auburn Public Library, Catherine Boss. Auburn Sewer District Board of Trustees, Stephen Milks. Then Auburn Water District Board of Trustees, Stephen Milks. The next set is, of appointments are basically what's up on the board. We're going to be going over that in a moment with the motion previously to move it from consent to new business. So, this is going to be a really nice segue for that, but let me explain this just for a second. There were some, there are some boards that once a mayor appoints a councillor to, they stay on that for a period of time. This is in your agenda package, one of which being Main Waste to Energy. Leroy Counselor Walker's on that currently. He does not need to be reappointed, because his term has not expired. 911, though, for example, he does need to be reappointed. So, there are some uniqueness there. Parks and Rec is another one. Parks and Rec, I appointed Counselor Gary to last year. It was not within my power to do so. There was a layover, standover, or holdover, if you would, from the previous council, which talked about, and Sue, by all means, correct me if I'm wrong or misspoke on this one, but that talked about increasing the scope of that committee and adding a councillor representative to that, or councillor representative to that committee. That never actually happened two councils ago. They never voted on that change in ordinance, but we went ahead during my new term and, you know, last session, and made that appointment. So, hence, we don't really have a council seat to appoint a representative to. So, as we continue to dig into this, it becomes very, very clear that out of the 32, 33 committees, commissions, boards, whether it be joint, quasi, or independent of Auburn, that we really need to look at all these very closely, try to build some consistency, try to eliminate redundancy, and overall improve effectiveness of our boards and committees for the benefit of the city and also for the benefit of the people who serve on these boards and committees, that we owe it to them. So, what I will be doing is I'll be forming an ad hoc, mayoral ad hoc committee. I'll have the details of this out to you by our next meeting, our last meeting in January. So far, that committee, as I've kind of briefed out, will consist of two city councillors, two staff members appointed by the city manager and myself to review all of our committees' organizations and to see how we can increase efficiencies. I'll ask the city council, if you all could please nominate and decide amongst yourselves who those two councillors will be. That'd be great. I would like to meet on this and be done with this and present a set of recommendations to the council no later than April 1st of this year. So, a little bit, about three months, and of course, if we need to extend, we can obviously extend a little bit more too, but definitely to be done before, or to coincide with really the adoption of certain aspects of the strategic plan. That way, we have committees and commissions that are working towards those goals with us. So, we want to make sure that everything's organized prior to that. So, that's my communication on that. Next on the agenda item, we'll get into in a second, will be the discussion about these appointments per se, all of which need council recommendation, excuse me, council affirmative votes on. Okay? So, that's it for communications. Now, we're going to go into, excuse me, open session. It's the first open session of the night. We're going to open this up to members of the public to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on this agenda. I'm going to ask you, please state your name and address, and limit your comments to about three minutes.
Good evening. First, I'd like to, to welcome and congratulate the four new councillors and the councillors that were awarded that position again, and the mayor. To our newly-elected councillors, there's an old adage that says, "Be careful of what you ask for. You might get it." Having said that, the fact that you're sitting in Auburn's City Hall chambers means to me that you want to be a part of making this great city even greater. Mayor Levesque, at the inauguration, shared his vision of where he would like the city of Auburn to go forward. I hope that you will share in the mayor's vision while also sharing your vision of what you think will benefit all of the citizens of our fair city and its businesses, small, medium, and large businesses. Peter mentioned a joint meeting between the school department and the, the council and the mayor. This is something that traditionally has been done every year, and some of you know I served, served on this school committee for five years, the last year as, as the chair of the committee, and had to resign, something about falling off a roof, I don't know. And during those five years, I realized that there, there hadn't been, for at least 10 years, a good relationship between the council and the mayor and the school committee. And there, there's probably a lot of reasons for that, but I, I think we need to work very hard at making it this type of a relationship instead of this. And lastly, I'd like to say that one of our city's past mayors once told me that we can all agree to disagree, as long as we don't become disagreeable. Thank you.
Thank you. This, I'm not sure if we, everybody caught your name, Larry? I know, Larry Pelletier. But everybody, in case you didn't mention, I'm not sure if you did, but Larry Pelletier, Ward 5. That's okay, Larry. Mr. Pelletier, thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to speak tonight? Of course.
Good evening. Dave Simpson, I live at 302 Lake Street with my family, and I'm a proud volunteer at the Auburn Rec, and I was, I was very impressed with that presentation. We have the Auburn Invaders softball team. We practice every Sunday morning at 7:00 AM, if you'd like to come watch that. About a year ago, I brought a concern via email to someone, and I don't know which, which committee member it was, if it was the city manager, around the, the area in front of 62 Turner Street, the YMCA, the crosswalk that goes in front of Turner Street, across the way after 5:00, members can park there. And about a year ago, and I can't remember who it was, they said, "Yeah, we'll do a study, a traffic study." And then it became spring, and it kind of fell off my radar. And now, I, I go to the Y pretty much every night. I run in, on the treadmills in the front, and every night, I watch a game of human frogger that, and, and we're not talking about adults. We're talking about the, their biddy basketball. They have about 200 kids who do that. Their ages from kindergarten to sixth grade. And I've got into the habit now, when I see kids trying to cross, I stop what I do to walk them across the street. It's, it's great, it's, it's unlit. It's very, very poorly lit. It's, I would like to propose, and I know, I'm sure that there's a cost associated with it, but I think it's, would be money very well spent to install something similar that we have in front of Harris Street for the EL students who cross there, where they hit a button or something, and there's flashing lights that really draw the attention to the drivers. It's, it's fascinating to me that we do that for kids 16 to 18, but kids, you know, 6 to 12, they're really on their own. It's an incredibly dangerous place for these kids to be crossing. I talked to Steve Wallace. He had a staff who got her foot run over a couple of years ago, cost $5,000 in medical bills and lost time. There, there's approximately 10,000 people swipe into the Y every month. Those are mostly adults, but if you go there any Saturday morning or Sunday morning, or Monday through Friday evening, when they're doing the basketball practices, the majority of these kids, they're little guys, and someone's going to get hurt. So, I just want to renew my, my inquiry, if we could please look at that, to enhance that crossing area for the kids going to the Y. Thank you. Congrats to you all on your, your appointments, your election.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Now, Mr. Manager, can we get a review of that, a quick review of that by email, and then at our next council meeting?
We can, and I, what I would say is, we have talked about it, and we're doing the study on Court Street, which I think may have some impact on that, positive impact, but I don't know at this point. Haven't seen the results of the study. We're not completed at this point in time. I know, I've talked to the Public Works Director about it and the police chief, and so it's not an issue that we're ignoring.
No, no, I just, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll get some feedback on that. No, it's, it's challenging. I think we all can agree on that one. Very good. Is anybody else in the public would like to speak? Now, Bing, I'll now close this open session. We're going to be moving on to unfinished business, which there is none, but we are going to be moving on to new business. And there is in addition a new business of order number 01-01062020, which is the confirmation of my recommendations and appointments to the agency, boards, committees, and commissions as listed previously in the agenda. Sorry about that. Counselor Lozani, I'll let you start this off.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I almost forgot. Can I have a motion, please, to add this to the agenda?
I'll move it.
I have a motion from Counselor Boss.
Second.
I have a second from Counselor Gary. Now, open discussion. Counselor Lozani, please.
Can we get up the page that has the, do we know where it is, that has the nominations on it? I could start the discussion. I think for me, looking at my appointment to the Finance and Audit Committee, I'm not sure what it's called.
It's the Audit Procurement Committee, and my recommendation was Counselor Gary and Counselor Lozani.
For me, I think that we need to consider it a little bit more closely. One, when it talks about what it is, is that they, oh, thank you. They meet annually with the auditors at the beginning of the audit to voice any concerns or issues they may have, or that they would like the auditors to look at, and then again, at the end of the audit, with the report is finalized, to review the comprehensive annual financial report. It would be helpful if the members had some financial background and understood accounting. I have to say for myself, this would be a stretch. I don't know the appropriate way to have these conversations, but I feel that there should be somebody who has some experience, knowledge, desire to work in this area, to assist Ms. Heisman on this, but also go through this process. I know that there hasn't been an active committee for a while, and that it's only meeting you mentioned twice a year. I just feel it does take some expertise. I just feel it does take some expertise.
That's okay. If we could have the clerk just actually strike, Councilor Lozani, from the Audit Procurement appointment, and to be substituted with a person at a later date, or TBD.
I would recommend that you make a motion to amend by striking.
Amend by striking?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, can we make, Councilor Gary?
Thank you. On the same appointment, it's not just working with the auditor, it's also working with the joint purchasing and procurement policy. And the date of this document is January second, two thousand thirteen, which is long outdated, which should be brought up to speed. And if we're going to be doing due diligence, then we should be meeting more often than two years to review the finance and the procurements and the different things, because time has changed. And if we can work closer with the school department, or them with us, maybe we'll be able to save money, because then we can do even more joint purchases than what we are. The reason I had joined Counselor, the good counselor here, Lozani, was the fact that historically, the sitting councilors were able to keep their positions that they were working on the following term, or they had the right to, if the, in other words, those that were currently returning would get the committees back that they had, if they wanted them. If not, any other opens, they would have first dibs on there. I frankly don't mind where I'm put, because I know I don't have favor in your eyes, so I'm willing to work wherever you will put me.
Well, thank you very much for that. If we could stick to the Audit Procurement before we go on to anything else, I actually...
Well, I got to work on that one, because, I mean, I'm trying to bring this...
Did you want to be stricken from that too? And my goal was to have two seasoned councilors start that committee up and get that moving again, but I can understand if, Councilor Lozani, that's fine, of course.
I appreciate that you want to do that, but I just do feel that there may be other, from what I know of other councilors, that might be better suited, because it is really important, and we have neglected it for a while.
Very good.
And I would like to research it further, to see if I would be a good fit. But what I would recommend is, if it's a joint group of the school and the city, then possibly the school representative should be on there as well. That way, he would have more access to the books and the purchasing and behind the scenes than being an, just an agile, casual committee, school board member.
So, great idea, great suggestion. When I look at appointments and recommendations, I try to balance workload, both public and private, to make sure everything kind of fits, but also with it's leaning towards what is the needs of the city, first and foremost. The school committee does have two spots in which they can appoint representatives too. So I want to make sure that there's balance there, and, you know, there is an actual rationale behind that. Granted, this hasn't met, this hasn't worked, this almost harks back to the conversation you had in August with regards to a budget committee and the need or no need for that. So, at this point, respect everybody what they're saying, we have to make a decision, so what I'd like to do is not make a decision. So I'd like to entertain a motion on the floor right now to strike, Councilor Gary and Councilor Lozani, from the Audit and Procurement Committee.
So moved.
I have a motion, Councilor Lozani, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Counselor Walker, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you for your consideration.
Nope, absolutely no problem. So what we'll do is leave those open until it's not tabled, obviously it's stricken, so they're still open, we'll fill that in the future, by next meeting. Thank you very much. Are there any other, now that was a motion, obviously now we're still within the motion. Do we have any further discussion or debate on any other appointments that are my recommendations that are up there on the board? None? Okay, very good then.
Point of information, do, were these other fellow councilors notified ahead that these got, they've got these positions, or are they surprised when the agenda packet came out?
I wouldn't call it surprising, that's why we send the agenda packet out. Okay, on the Thursday prior to the meeting. Most of them were, with the holidays and New Years, I did not reach out to everybody. Okay, it was definitely a challenging time, but that's one of the reasons we had conversations during our orientation, and lastly, like, it's included in the agenda. Nor did anyone call me after the agenda was posted to voice any concerns.
So, before we get out of it, can we affirm that the people that you, the good councilors that you appointed want to stay on this as appointed or not?
That's why we vote, and we open it up for conversation. If there's no further comments, or anybody requesting a strike through, speak now. None being, very good then. I'd like to bring this to a vote. All the, excuse me, all those in favor of order zero-one dash zero-one zero-six two zero two zero, as amended, please raise your hand. Okay? It passes unanimously. Very good, thank you. We're going to be moving on to additional new business now. We have an order appointing the Citizens Advisory Committee Council Representative. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to appoint or recommend Holly Lozani for that position.
I have a nomination from Councilor Gary for Counselor Lozani. Do I have any more nominations? Councilor Carrier?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Milks for that position.
Very good, I have a nomination for Counselor Milks from Ward Three, and Counselor Lozani from Ward One. Do I have any more nominations at this time? None being, I'm going to open this up. We have two councilors that have been nominated for this position, just to bring you all up to speed, for those of you who might not be knowledgeable on this one, again, it's one of those confusing ones. So, the mayor actually does not appoint their representative to the CAC. The mayor does appoint the members of the CAC. So there was a change that happened a little bit earlier, or, excuse me, late last year in 2019. So, we have two councilors being nominated, I'd like to open this up and give this, give the floor to each one of the councilors that have been nominated to speak for approximately a minute. Start with Counselor Lozani.
Thank you for the nomination. Just so people know, that normally, membership in this committee is a five-year commitment, and so I just feel having the continuation of that, it also took me almost a good part of a year to be able to get to the point where I really understood how this committee worked, including the HUD money, CDPG money, and the local money that gets distributed. So, that's why I would enjoy being a part of the committee again, as well as the new consolidated plan is coming up, and it's something that we've started to work on.
Very good. Counselor Milks?
Being a new member of the council, longtime business owner in Auburn, I feel as if, also a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, that I bring a lot of the things that would be important, background in real estate, and I feel that it's very important that we, that we can address some of the things within the Strategic Planning Committee, particularly neighborhoods, beautification, rehabilitation of properties, and within our city, and I bring that sort of skill set, having been through a great number of buildings in our city, and so I think I would bring that skill set to the, to the committee.
Do we have any other comments from the council? Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I nominated Holly was because she attended all the meetings, like she said she's done her thorough research, and where, especially where we're behind in having the committee set up and move forward, she's up to speed, she can move forward tomorrow if you called, if a meeting was called. I'm not going to say anything bad about Counselor Milks, because yes, I agree that he could bring things to the table, but just, if he does not win the nominations, he still can come forward and participate at the meetings and bring forth his recommendations, his knowledge and expertise. Same as I too would like to sit on this board, but as a citizen participant, because I fit all the criteria of a person living in the new Auburn target area, and that's the area that I'm going to fight, and I'm not going to throw my hat in the ring, because I know Holly is, her qualifications, her thoroughness, her research, and the whole nine yards, and like I said, I mean, no disrespect to Counselor Milks.
Very good. Is there any other comments on this? None being, I'm going to ask for a vote on the order of nomination. All those in favor of appointing Counselor Lozani to the Community Advisory Committee, please raise your hand.
Do we get to vote?
Of course you do. I was kind of curious, I didn't know how to address that, if you weren't going to.
Point of information, are you voting on the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Three for Counselor Lozani, all those in favor of Counselor Milks. Four, Counselor Milks is a city council appointment, appointee to the...
Okay, so we voted on the nomination, now we should vote on the appointment. You nominated, you voted, so now we need a motion to appoint?
Very good.
Counselor Milks, a second, and then vote.
Very good. Do I have a, do I have a, excuse me, a motion to appoint Counselor Milks as a nominee to the Citizen Advisory Commission?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Counselor Carrier, and a second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor? Counselor Milks is the appointee, by a vote of five to two. Next on the agenda, we have an order authorizing the sale by sealed bid of the tax-acquired property, PID number one-nine-one dash zero-eight-seven, Reginald Street. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
I have a motion for Counselor Carrier?
Second.
I have a second from Counselor Lozani. Open this up to the public for public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment about this sale of tax-acquired property? None being, I'll bring it back to the councils, is there any debate? None being, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Passes by, a vote of seven-zero. Next, we have an order authorizing the sale by sealed bid of the tax-acquired property at Zero Court Street, PID number two-one-eight dash zero-one-seven. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to accept.
Motion for Counselor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Milks. Open this up to the public for comment. None being, bring it back to the council. Any debate? None. I'll ask for a vote. Show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, none being, order passes seven-zero. Next, we have an order authorizing the sale by sealed bid of the tax-acquired property at thirty-one Beck Avenue, PID number two-zero-eight dash zero-four-five. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion for Counselor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Lozani, I'm going to open this up to the public. Anybody from the public would like to comment? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, debate, discussion, comments? None being, show of hands, all those in favor? Order passes by a vote of seven-zero. Next, we have an order authorizing the sale by sealed bid of the tax-acquired property at sixteen Albiston Way, PID number two-two-zero dash one-zero-three. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Motion for Counselor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Lozani. Open this up to the public for comment. None being, I'll bring it back, oh, I'm sorry. Open this up to the public for comment. Mr. Pelletier?
Larry Pelletier, one-twenty-nine Second Street. I am in favor of this sale, because I worked for Maine Oxy for twenty-two years in that property. Back then, when I first started in eighty-seven, it was an eyesore and a fire hazard, and I think it needs to come down.
Good, thank you. No other public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for debate. Debate, comment? None being, show of hands, all those in favor? Order passes seven-zero. Next, we have an order authorizing the sale by sealed bid of the tax-acquired property at seventy-two Gil Street, PID number two-one-one dash one-two-five. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Carrier, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. None being, I'll bring it back to the council, any debate? None being, show of hands, all those in favor? Order passes seven-zero. Next, we have an order authorizing the sale by sealed bid of the tax-acquired property at three-two-five Turner Street, PID number two-five-zero dash one-seven-seven. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion from Counselor Carrier, a second from Counselor Walker. Any comment from the public? None being, bring it back to the council for debate. Any debate questions? None? Show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, none? Order passes by a vote of seven-zero. Very good, and we're going to move on to reports next. Again, slightly different format, on reports, reports by the mayor and the council are specifically designed to be reporting on committee or subcommittee matters, okay? For example, I'll report on the Hundred and Fiftieth Committee that met approximately two weeks ago at the Auburn Public Library. We are winding down the Hundred and Fiftieth Committee's activities. The last major event was our New Year's Eve Auburn celebration, which, hard to say, roughly twenty-five-hundred people attended at one peak time, right at the fireworks, at ten o'clock. Counselor Lozani, there's about, I'd say, two thousand people there. Hats off to Public Works. I mean, really, hats, like, multiple hats off to Public Works. It was a disaster area at ten a.m., and by six p.m., it looked like it hasn't snowed in a year. So, except for the Christmas tree, which was probably the most beautiful hallmark Christmas tree ever to be erected in a municipality, I think there's probably about two thousand pictures taken of that tree. So, Parks and Rec Department, outstanding job, Sabrina, she's gone, don't blame her, she put in triple time for the event. Mark, you as well, as EMC, frankly, everybody involved, the recognition can't be, can't be enough. So the Hundred and Fiftieth Committee, recognizing all that has happened, has scheduled one more event, and that'll be the wrap-up event, which will take place around our birth date of February twenty-second, plus or minus a few days. It'll be a ceremony at the Auburn Senior Community Center, which will also include, hopefully, the stuffing or addition of information, lack of a better term, into the time capsule that Mamie Antoine, from the Auburn Public Library, is heading up. And that time capsule will be interned at the dedication ceremony for the Bells of St. Louis, at a date to be determined, when it warms up and the concrete settles, in Anniversary Park. So that is the rough tentative plan going forward for that committee. That's the only committee report I have. Thank you. We'll start with councilor reports next. I like to alternate between, starting on the left, at-large councillor, and then the right-at-large councillor. So, we'll start off with Counselor Boss.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Walker?
Just one report. New Year's Day, we had a great, really great turnout at the Senior Community Center at Patton Gill Park. Instead of staying up to midnight to watch the new year come in, we did a celebration for seniors fifty and above, right at Patton Gill Park at the new senior center. We had over sixty people show up. I had all the volunteers from the Age Friendly Committee there, helping out, as well as Brian was there to help with the cake, the servant of the sparkling drink, and, but we had a great turnout. We did a lot of work to get ready for it, and we were just crossing our fingers that we'd have a lot of people show up, and we did. So, that's why we built this building to where it is today, and I think it's really, really showing what a great community we have here in Auburn, and inviting our friends around us to come and be part of it. It is really showing off what we really are, and being part of the AARP makes a big difference for us as a age and friendly community of Auburn, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrier?
The airport board met Thursday last month. For those who haven't been out there, the work has stopped for this year. The, for those of you who don't know, the airport is being, having the Runways four and twenty-two lengthened. They are pulling the hill down and using it to lengthen the south side of the runway, and they're building up the runway on the north side. They're moving the electronics over to the east side of the field. They're currently located on the west, but that's shut down for this year, and they'll pick it back up as soon as the weather possibly lets them start back. As far as the school committee goes, we had our first meeting with the new board this last month, and started a couple of new items, and so far as the counseling for students and faculty, they're looking at a new program from local companies here, to sort of pick up the slack where the initial study started, and will also be looking at, coming up, we'll be looking at the finance that they just passed.
Good. Counselor Milks?
Nothing.
Counselor Ubeklub?
Nothing yet.
Counselor Lozani?
The Recycling Committee continues to meet on Thursday mornings, and after our trips out to Main Waste to Energy, and also Casella, we have a lot of good information. They're going to be, we're going to be meeting again on Thursday at seven-thirty. We have two Bates students are going to help us with research during the coming year, and we'll be meeting on the Thursday after that with the Sustainability Coordinator from South Portland.
We extended, just so the new councilors have it updated, and I'm blanking right now, we extended the work for this ad hoc committee until?
May.
May of this year? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee is meeting this Wednesday at 12:30 out to AbcoG. I know I'm not the rep, but it should get out there for the public that would like to attend these public, open meetings.
Did you attend the last one? Was there anything to report on that?
That one, I was informed by you, I no longer served on it, so I didn't attend the last one.
Okay.
And we were instructed to attend Maine Municipal Elected Counselors or Officials Meeting. All seven of us councils attended a very informative, well-put-on meeting by Maine Municipal. And one of the things they taught us was, when we're writing ordinances and things, they too also called it legislation. So it's not just a legislature that can work on legislation, us counselors, when we propose changes to our ordinances, it can also be called legislation.
Very good. I'm going to turn this over to the city manager for his report.
Okay. So keeping with the theme of trying to be brief, I appreciate the mayor's comments about New Year's. Great job by the staff. We've got a great team. Public who are watching, citizens in the community, if you're interested in when parking bans occur, please sign up for alerts. The Winterfest event will be taking place from January 24th to the 26th. There will be various events around the community, sponsored or held by local organizations and groups. There'll be an opening night at Lost Valley with a torchlight parade, fireworks, skiing, tubing, live band. It's going to be a great event overall, from January 24th to 26th. We'll also have Mount Appetite, Mount Appetite Snow Shoe Hiking. There'll be a free family movie at the library. There's also going to be dog sleds, believe it or not, at the East Baptist Church. So look for that on the website. I wish Sabrina was here, Sabrina's very excited about that aspect of it. And, you know, I appreciate what is being done by Recreation, Sports, Tourism Department and all the folks involved. Thank you.
Can we bring our own dogs and sleds? Join?
I don't know.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try. Very good, thank you. Now, on to, actually, Finance Director's Report. That's a great way to start our first meeting. Ms. Eastman, if you could give us just a brief tutorial on what these reports are and kind of how they, the layout is, again, just a kind of a synopsis, if you would?
Sure. Generally, I start with the general fund, and I give you a brief update of the accounts that are significant. The revenue accounts, we have three major revenues that come into the city, which is property taxes, excise tax, and state revenue sharing. The other revenues are small, but they're, they're all listed on the revenue sheet. And the revenue sheet is your second spreadsheet, and it's this sheet here, and it lists the current year budget, the current year actuals, and then it compares it to prior year. We do the same for the expenditures and the general fund. Now, that's the, the fund that we budget for, that we actually has a budget. The general fund, and then the other two funds that have budgets are the Ingersoll Arena and Norway Savings Bank. Those are the budgets that are actually adopted by the city council. The city has some other accounts that we have, they're called special revenue funds and capital project funds. Special revenue funds are used, it's grant money that we receive, it's for a specific purpose, and it carries forward year after year until it's spent and the, and the grant is no longer. Also, the, the revenue from the rec programs, they have probably, like they said, a number of different programs, and each one has a separate account. It has a revenue account and expense account, so that we can monitor the money in and out for those programs. And then the capital projects fund is all of our CIP, and it's all the bonded capital items that we do. I don't report that on a monthly basis. So generally, I, I concentrate on the general fund when I talk to you about this report, but there is other information included in this report, and if you have questions about it, I'm glad to answer any of those questions. As, now, this report is out as of the end of November. So we were five months into the fiscal year. The budget number, target number that you would look at if every month was exactly the same would be about 41.7% expended. There are some accounts, for example, debt service, we pay the, the major part of our debt service in September. So that account is about 90% expended, right at the beginning of the fiscal year. But as a general rule, the, the operating departments are fairly consistent throughout the year. And so those are the ones that I would look for to be right around that 41.7%. So, right now, where the total budget on the city side at the end of November was at 47.48%, the main reason that's higher is because, like I said, the debt service, it was at 87.59% at the end of November. And it's a big amount of our budget, it's about 5% of the total budget. The other accounts that some, we pay all upfront, some of those are intergovernmental programs, where we subsidize the 911, we, they have a budget, we give them money to help, they run their program, along with the City of Lewiston, the airport, and the But the, the operating departments, most of them, were right, right where I would expect them to be, and I compare them to, to the prior year. So I don't see anything that causes me angst, if, if you will. On the revenue side, property taxes are due in two installments, they're due in September and in March. And so right now, at the end of November, we were at 50%, which is very common. A lot of people will pay the entire amount of their property taxes in the fall.
To the next year.
Yeah, they'll pay the, both payments. So we generally will run a little bit higher than the 41%. And some people want to pay it before year-end because they, they can deduct it on their income tax. So, other than that, then I also, I include the EMS. There's three pages that are on our EMS program, which is, we, we actually bill for that, we have a transport for ambulances. And so I was asked to provide that information so that you could see the activity on that EMS report, uh, the EMS. And then there's Ingersoll and Norway. Now, if anyone has questions, I would be glad to...
Council, just, it's a lot of data. I'd encourage everybody to really look at it deeply, and, you know, send email questions out to Ms. Eastman or city manager if they pop up. I don't think any question's a dumb question at this point, especially, you know, me, coming from the public, private sector, it's set up differently than this set of books on the municipal side. Not saying one's better than the other, it's just a different layout. Is there any questions right now, though, based upon, since the agenda went out, that you might have? Councilor Lasagna?
This just has to do with the Norway Savings Bank Arena, since the relationship is different. Should we be getting reports that look any different from what we're getting now, just because the city owns the property?
I don't think so, because the only difference in that is the debt, where the debt is. And it's still the same activity.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Is there any other questions? No? We'll make sure there's more questions.
Definitely. If you ever have questions, don't hesitate to give me a follow or, you know, I'm glad to help you.
Yeah, I like to, I mean, I, I will say one thing, though, before we wrap this part up. I am a little discerned with revenues from property tax, and I understand the rationale, but a comparison, an apples-apples comparison of last fiscal year still shows that we're down in cash received by $700,000. Am I reading that incorrectly? I mean, this time to this time?
No, you're not.
So down, but is there any, any noticeable explanation? I guess, it has, it has nothing to do with people paying upfront or not, it would still be categorized in the appropriate fiscal year. So, just down in property taxes, we haven't had a valuation change? We haven't had, you know, swaths of the city disappear?
Last year was, for some reason, I think that, what it was last year was, there was some, there was something out there that was possible, they were not going to be able to take property taxes as a deduction anymore.
Right, the 20, basically the federal tax...
And so a lot of people came in and paid it early last year. There was, there was an extra, a high amount, and it was, and it played high all year.
But would that revenue be attributed to this fiscal year versus last fiscal year when you received it? In other words, or, I mean, your, your finance method, I believe, is GAAP, correct? Or cash basis versus accrual?
It's a cash basis until June 30th, and then it's accrual.
Oh, gee God. So in other words, if they paid ahead of time in the previous fiscal year, would you have that cash annotated in that fiscal year, or would you move it into this fiscal year?
If it was, if it was for that fiscal year's taxes, it would show as revenue. If it was for this year's property taxes, it would show as prepaid, and it would be an asset to the city.
Prepaid being an asset. Do we have prepaid as an asset here in one of these, in your report?
It, it would show on the balance sheet, but I don't break this balance sheet down that, that far.
I just, I'm looking at this as a substantial deficit, you know?
As soon as the tax bills go out, that prepaid goes away.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. Let's, let's keep an eye on it, though. I still, whenever I've seen something so large as a negative, I get a little anxiety.
Yeah, I don't, don't worry, we're, we're all right.
Okay, very good, then. Any other questions on finance?
Comparing to two years ago, is it comparable? Yes.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? None? Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Eastman. I'll close out reports now. Oh, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to accept and place on file the October, November 2019 monthly finance reports.
So moved.
A motion for Council Carrier, do I have a second? A second from Councilor McLeod. Show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? None being? A vote of six to zero with Councilor Walker absent. Second open session of the night. It's rules, same rules as the first. Anybody from the public that would like to speak about city business that does not appear on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium, and you have three minutes. State your name and address. Is there anybody else? None being? Okay. I'll now close this second open session. We have an executive session with legal consultation on rights and responsibilities pursuant to one MRSA, section 405, actually, we're going to go on economic, okay, I'm sorry. We're going to move into executive session based upon economic development, project negotiations, North River Road, Minot Avenue, Intermodal Facility pursuant to one MRSA, section 405. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion for Council Carrier, a second from Councilor Milks. All those in favor? Okay. About a six to zero, we're now in executive session.
I'll now declare this council out of executive session. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's my move.
I have a ca- I have a motion from Councilor Boss. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, from Councilor McLeod. By voice vote, all those in favor of adjourning.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.